Both.
And there's the Boyd.
Boyd.
Hello.
Hi.
Morning.
Good.
Bob?
Hi.
How you been?
I've been.
You've been?
I've been.
I'm glad you did.
How about you?
I've been. I've been too. Also.
You've been?
I've been, I've been. I've been gone. That's what I've been.
Oh. Yes?
I'm feeling pretty good. How about you?
Good.
You're sitting up straight.
I'm behaving really well. Back in touch. Can't complain a bit about it.
That's what we like.
Let's see.
We went to lunch with some ladies from.
I'm good.
Guess you know where the Dropbox is, right? You put them there, so of course you know where the Dropbox is. Well, it should be, better be the same directory.
I hope it was okay.
I was at the gym the other day.
FWC.
Girl comes up to me, she says. Are you on the federal city council? I say, huh?
Yeah, and then city council.
Yeah, I had to go in there and pay a ticket for a rec that I had. And I saw your picture on the wall.
And then tonight. And it's all in the packet.
Said her name was Macy. Thank you.
I looked at the picture, wasn't I?
You're bringing this, you're bringing this tepid water. I'm just teasing.
We're gonna get some, we're gonna get some gold.
Hey, fine Boyd, give me a cold one.
Just for you, David.
Well, that's a good reason.
Okay, well, we'll delay the start for. Till Boyd gets back.
For the water boy.
The water boy. It sounds like we probably won't run out of time.
No, but I do appreciate your running down so we can see it. I mean, it's just nice to be able to follow along, even though we're not.
Oh, the bouncing.
We've pretty well hammered this out already.
There are some details that we didn't have before, right?
Here you go, David.
Here you go, Bob. Thank you. Thank you.
Cool. Katie always brings her own. Okay, well, let's start our budget work session. Uh, we'll just assume Katie will be coming in at some point. And um, let's let, I'm gonna pr- turn this over to Cody to make his presentations. And uh, then of course, we can ask any questions. And all that kind of good stuff. Cool. Take it away, Mr. Carden.
Okay, so I don't have time to talk now, so you can have other questions. So right here, this is all the changes from that last.
Yeah, somewhere on May first or second, yeah.
Yeah, May second. So these are the changes that I made for the budget.
Parentheses is an increase or a decrease?
It depends. If it's a revenue, it's an increase, if it's a expense, it's a decrease.
I don't like that property one. It's got parentheses on it.
So the reason that that changes is remember, we always have to like, or should overestimate what our property taxes are gonna be. And then once we actually get the certified tax rate from the county, um, they give us this budget revenue amount, and it has to match the budget. And so, um, technically, if we underestimated that, then somebody could come in and be like, well, you really owe me that much money because you said you only needed a free hundred fifty thousand. And this came in at three hundred and sixty-two thousand, so you only need eight thousand. So you should, you should reduce that. So I always try to overestimate a little bit on property taxes. And the cost of it's really the best way to tax. So change that. Um, the mayor asked me to put some money in the CDA to pay for professional services and medical services. So I added that, I originally allocated that.
That could be enough. That could be enough. Is that gonna be enough?
For this year.
I trust you. I just.
When we need to pay for something, because it's coming.
Plus, we still have funds in the CDA.
Right, we have about two hundred thousand sitting in there, because we've been contributing.
For the last ten years.
We really don't have an arbitrary CDA right now. We've just been making a contribution from the general fund to that fund. And so I've been earning interest and things, so that's what's in there.
Coming out of there.
It's just a contribution from the general fund.
And we actually, um, well, we renamed the CDRA a CRA, so we have that. That we can now use that.
Area and taxes.
That's coming, yes.
And all that. We don't have that then.
Yes.
So this is to pay for that. This, we may or may not use. This is like if we need to pay for other studies, or if we needed to purchase something, uh, rather than just paying professionals. So if you remember, we talked about I needed a public works employee. Originally, I had that in the, um, I believe in the sewer fund, but then as we talked, we really didn't have an employee in sanitation. And so I moved all of that new employee to sanitation, all the wages and benefits. So that's what's happening here. Um, we needed a vehicle for that new employee, if you remember. So I made a contribution from the stormwater farm and the sanitation fund to the, um, our capital project vehicle replaced by a fund. For that, that's what this fifty thousand is. And then, um, this is to buy the new truck. And then, um, I set up an account for contributions to outside entities for five grand. And then added some appropriations for that. So everything else.
Donations to outside entities, is that similar to like what we did with rodeos and?
Yeah, because technically you can't do that unless you have a budget set up and you have a public hearing and stuff.
So that's like when our FFA group came in or whatever.
Yeah. So technically, you can't exceed that amount unless it's in the budget. And I, or you have a public hearing, now that probably shouldn't just get your money away. Um, so that's all the changes.
Okay.
So, um.
The changes since May.
Since May. So I haven't had any of the city staff ask me for anything. Or having the changes that way. So that's everything that's been adjusted in the budget since we went through that line by line under May. Um, this has been in Dropbox since Monday. Um, and amended budgets in there as well. So we can go over that if you want, but really, there's no changes other than these. Um, we can talk about property taxes if we want, if there's something you have questions about, we can talk about that. That I do kind of.
Taxed on inflation isn't fair.
And so I would, so when we get into the regular meeting we're doing, because we got four public hearings. This will be fun, in and out of public hearings. And so, um, what I'd kind of like to do, if it's all right with you, Cody, is basically for each of those, before we go into the public hearing for that, have you make the presentation to the public about that subject.
And that's fine, if we can talk about it. So, um, yeah, that's perfectly.
And then we can go into the public comments, they can do their public comments, then back out. And then the next thing you can present. And that way, at the end, the way we have this lined up, we can just vote on things. Because we'll have heard everything, we'll have presented everything.
Yeah, and.
It will be kind of a monotonous in and outs of public hearings unless we happen to have a crowded room full of people who do want to speak on any given subject.
And the biggest one we have to make sure that we separate is that we want associated with, you know, many. All their S, we can. Kind of even over here. So for our taxes, um. So you can see, this is what our tax rate did. So it went from three five four to the three three three. So if we do that as a percentage.
That's better. That's down.
Three, three, three.
Three, three, three. So it's that, if you're flying around, you're. So our property tax rate decreased by five point nine percent. So that would be indicative that our home values will not be five point nine percent. Because if you remember, we're guaranteeing the amount of money, so it's kind of sliding scale. So its home values go up or it's drop.
But we can't claim that we lowered taxes.
No, because you're taxed on the higher value.
Taxes are the same, and that's where people like.
I know, it's, it.
They play that game like, oh, I'm holding the rate, but it's like, well, in reality, that's where the state does it.
Sounds good.
Yeah, till you tax me on my inflation.
Yeah. So the only thing I'm really pointing out here is you can see, so new growth that we had, um, based upon, and if you remember, that's gotta be growth from January first of twenty twenty-three to January first of twenty twenty-four. We generated sixty-five hundred dollars just about property tax from being around for that.
So what would that translate roughly to in terms of actual residences?
Well, it's.
Are we, are we?
So about those residences. You know, like we're about a hundred blocks apart, so.
So that'd be.
Sixty-four maybe, but then there could be some control there. But actually, it looks like most of this is like centrally accessed growth, so it's probably not even really residences.
So it's not something we could, we could directly interpret as, uh, more housing, uh, more residential development. It doesn't equate to that.
No. It's just kind of interesting, because that's really our growth there in property taxes. Is that sixty-four hundred dollars.
Where we've cashed in. Pay for the gas, for the vehicles, for one vehicle for a year. Month or so.
And where did that come from? Do we have any idea for sure where it's?
I don't know. It would be, you would have to ask the assessor what that was.
It's, it's the county assessor that does this, right?
Correct.
And so they probably had like whatever properties were, you know, moved into that that were built and were now being.
Well, they might, they might look at a piece of property that used to be farmed, and now some developer's planning on putting something there. Immediately, they're gonna reassess a higher tax rate.
They, they don't usually until it actually changes. Usually.
There was one year we were building a house, and so as of January first, like our buildings, they shared, and our rent, it's not like that. So that's our house. Very additional assesses twenty percent.
In reality, what did they do?
Assesses us.
I think they shouldn't tax until the dang thing's done.
Yeah.
They don't care what I think. They never call me. It's not a lot of growth, really.
It's really not. And so that's the, like, unfortunate part of the property taxes, because we really don't get any draw. So you can see, we talked about this last time, that our last property tax increase is attached to twenty thirteen, so that would have been in this year fourteen. So that whole time, all we would have got each year is whatever that growth factor is. So like, if we go back and like get the prior year, our growth was ninety-nine hundred, so it was back that year. It's fourteen, so like, there was more going on a few years ago.
I'd say. Hmm, that's interesting.
On that, like, the county assess us.
And that may change next year with all that going on on two thousand.
Right. But in theory.
In theory.
Last, it's about January first, we might want to.
Right, sure.
So it might be totally different years.
Sure. But we can see future growth, because it's coming up out of the ground.
So that's kind of all I have. Um, unless you got some questions, or something you wanna talk about, or something you wanna look at changing for tonight's meeting, we can talk about it in years, without working on the details. Um, if you're interested in this.
Oh, what do you guys got? Questions, comments, changes? Concerns?
Pretty much hash that, I believe.
As long as we're in the black, I'm fine.
What do we have control over, so?
Yeah. Um, we can.
Well, we have, we have control over our budget.
We can run through some of these if you want. Um, so the consolidated fee schedule, I remember the whole change we have related to the budget is we're passing out that five percent increase that the hollows assessing on place. Um, so that's really what we, like, the increase that's having a convenient, I guess, other quarters. Um, for the, for the budget, and then trying to use working, uh.
Adjustments.
Well, but, um, here's my form, so I'm increasing sales tax, like thirty-five hundred, totalation for Ontario, whatever, eighty, eight hundred thousand. I used to buy movies, I would make your consultants here just.
About twice a month.
So.
We're getting.
And then because, um, Judge Holt is having.
It's kind of a lease reserve.
Our people report services are about.
It's going up too, and they're still dumping once a month.
You catching this, David? You catching on with?
That's always changing after, like, right here, that's it. Um, we've been over the tax rates, we've been over the new, um, the new budget. It's all, it's all the, we just get those, we talked about that. Um, so then this one right here, this twenty twenty-four.
Is this the new one?
That's the new one, so if you remember, so, um. So this is a new one, the prior about it, and your legal agency. This one was weird, because it started off that it was in, uh, you guys, and appointed positions. It was like they were appointed positions, compensation. And then more, and all of that went away. And the stuff that was left is executive municipal officers. So you have to disclose the wages. And the key, really, the key increases associated with them. So like, we don't have this, but we have a super town manager, or chief in, chief officer. There's an assistant, the city or town attorney, and the girl who is head or chief of a city or town department, um, or a deputy or assistant. So really, we're talking about like Nick, and Nate, and Andrea, possibly like Dave and Rob, and other, like, assistants. And so we're required by law now to disclose what they make. Um, and what, well, really what they can increase is guaranteed. Um, and so.
When you say disclose, where?
And we have to have a public hearing on it, and then we have to provide, like, that information somewhere.
Like on our website or something?
Just once. You don't have to.
Every year.
You don't have to keep it published on our webpage or anything?
No.
Oh, good.
We just have to do it once a year. Yes, and so.
That's not so.
In the package, we, we need to have a new wage scale. But we also, like, that's kind of how we show that. I also, um, include, like, a summary sheet that kind of shows some of the increases too. But, um, it's really like a base now, and so what they want is to know, like, what the council is giving us potential increases. And so that really ties us down that, like, we can't give increases really for those departments other than doing this, which is like here. And disclose the rest.
So basically, we approve that, uh, pay scale, and we're exposing to the public those ones that we're required to.
Right, and there's a few other things that, that most things we don't do. Um, like if you're in semi-day, or a credit, or like a bonus, or a vehicle allowance, or a service salary, and most things also have to disclose. So we wouldn't be able to say, like, hey, we don't require especially to put our executive officers, or officers, without doing this. So.
Just part of transparency.
Right, so for the next budget, you can write that on the copy table. So we have to be very careful with those things in the segment. So that's that one, even acting compensation. Um, this one right here, I mean, the treasures of justice for judges paid. So we're required by state law to pay a lawyer, his resident, or his board members, or. So we're required by state law to approve the judges, uh, paid each year by ordinance. And it has to be, the AOC sends out a range, it has to be within that range, but it also has to be the average increase of all the other employees. So like, we can't give one employee. And not have a requirement of judges, right? So, and so, um, sort of, we've done that for judge, and then as of how we use that man, we've also used the average for mine.
Well, that brings up a question. If you have a new, new hire, and they're at the low end of the pay scale, and you start stepping them, I don't know if we step.
Yeah, and that scale you see is a step.
Does judges have to, does judges pay have to incrementally increase based on that new person as well?
So it's really just kind of that one time a year with the budget. And that's how our Ted unit is set up too. The hard employees before, they used to be there, and they raised the staff, like, based upon their, and luxury. But then a lot of times, you can't forgot, or you can postpone. So when we change that a few years ago, we changed this, so it always happens with the budget. So like, part of approving that pay scale too, is approved by, we're figuring out that rate for the judge.
Because it's the average, right? Or based on the average.
And nothing retroactive from, it's just at that point in time when the budget.
So it just starts as of July first. So now if I did it over a moment or something, then obviously, that's a little different. But like, there, we're kind of walking the plan, the scale on that previous.
I wish, I wish I could make as much as you.
It'll be all.
Yeah.
You make more than the judge.
So if you remember, um, the progress assessment, that is a requirement by the state auditor's office. And so we just have to show that to you guys each year, so you know. It's really arbitrary. Um, the people who designed the, the state auditor's office, a group of people still there, but the other people aren't all even there. It's kind of arbitrary, the weights, but we're required by state law to have you guys, uh, be seen that each year. So that's included in the package. It really had the change months from last year. Um, we just have to answer the questions. Um, like if we have policies, and those kind of things, we get points, like, because I'm a CPA, we get twenty points for that.
So what did our points wind up being?
So our points, I can't remember.
Was it at the top?
Yeah. No.
No?
There's a two hundred up there.
It doesn't show right there.
What's that top line?
But I think we're.
Or is that just the pay, uh, one of the?
Yeah.
Total points earned right there, yeah.
Oh, there.
So we're right on the border of, uh, we're in the moderate category, so we got another twenty points. We bump into the low category. Really, the only thing that this plays into right now is in our Pata report at the end, um, in the state compliance report, it shows what this is. And it says we're being a moderator as based upon our progress assessments. So we could work with Liam and implement some of these policies that we basically have dashes for to come up with like another twenty-five points if we wanted to get into that whole category. Um, some of it, like this broad highlight, I think that'd be an easy twenty points if we wanted to do that, we just need to set up resources and stuff that we really have, like a broad outline to get those points.
Well, and there's one on there about, uh, basically if we would hold our ethics training.
Yeah.
We'd get twenty points.
Yeah. So.
Which I think Liam plans to do next year, along with our annual, uh, open meetings act.
Yeah, and this one's easy, like, each year you just have to sign, like, a commitment, and they, they're a lot by now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there, that's a, almost a freebie.
Yeah.
And I'm interested in the IT and computer security, uh, we have all of that, don't we?
I don't know if we have the formal policies.
Okay.
So we just have that being.
Oh, this is more about policies than?
I think we do have the internal audit formal policy as far as for checking credit card, checking, double checking. I think we do have that.
I thought we did.
And, and yeah, I think we do, and I think we're giving ourselves twenty points there. For that one.
Looks like it.
So we can work on this, some of these, you know, in some moments, just policies. And so we can have, in wrap, a few policies, going to make sure we're moving the policy. And we can get into that whole category. For a little while, um, the R and G, the trust, the total government's trust, they were gonna base some of our rates off of this, but then they got a bunch kicked back, and so they've changed. So we've run out of time to, to look at that. Or to, I mean, to, like, other than the state compliance report, like, this. I mean, in theory, what they're saying is if we do all this stuff, we should be more secure. Some of it I agree with, some of it I don't know that. Like, in theory, signing, I agree with this, as we're gonna be at, hopefully, you may get a South West God.
What does this translate back into, and in terms of the relationship between where this is coming from and who we are? What's the byproduct of it? What comes out of it?
So what the state auditor's office was hoping for with this is, especially with like smaller entities, which we would be, but probably even more so in like rural, you got, they had a bunch of like misappropriation problems and stuff. So they were hoping by you guys, the government body seeing this, that it would incentivize you to spend money to implement some of these policies and procedures. Because a lot of like big ones, you've got to have, like adequate separations of duties. So entities with small employees, it's hard to beat that, so like, hire an external accountant, or a common lines of, uh, reviews and things.
So, but what's the incentive? In other words, we do all this, does it translate into some kind of a financial benefit to the city from the state?
There, there's a risk level of misappropriation progress is a lot. By their interpretation.
But it doesn't translate into a savings or a benefit or?
Not even a participation medal?
In our report, in the state compliance report, it says we have a lot of progress.
Okay, so that's sort of a participation.
Sleep better at night, it's basically all we get, right?
And some of these weights, like when this first thing out, like this point, this number three, you only receive credit if there was a CPA. But like a CTFM, like, some of those are very specific certifications just for, um, governments. And I didn't even give, so it's really arbitrary, I guess, once again.
I guess you know what all those acronyms are?
Some, most of them, so.
Do any of those besides you apply? Do any of those apply besides yours to us?
No, no, nobody else has any of those. And like you get at some points, like if somebody has at least a bachelor's degree in accounting, I have a bachelor's in accounting.
So you got us ten points?
So I did this, I did this thirty points.
Thank you.
Way to go, Cody. We'll get you a participation medal for that.
Yeah, get good lunch on that. Yeah, so anyway, so that's what that is. So that's really everything, if I can find that agenda again. That's really everything we're gonna talk about tonight.
And you're okay with having you present that to the public before?
That's fine, I'll, I do it really brief, so if you want more, then.
I mean, just so that we know that that's the topic we're on, and that's what they get to comment on.
Right.
Not the next one, not the previous one, but this one, we gotta, you know?
Yep, I can handle that.
You know, we'll try to keep it under control, and then we can just do the voting towards the end, up or down. And so, um, just to be clear. We don't really have a choice but to pass a budget.
Correct. Correct. The only choice we would really have is so if you guys decided to do truth in taxation tonight. Rather than, um, adopt the tax rate that's in there.
And we'd adopt a basically another tentative.
Yeah, it's called in, it's, yeah, like a working and acting budget. And basically that's the budget that's in place until the final budget adoption in August. But short of that, we have to have a budget approved by July or June 22nd. So unless we want to come back here tomorrow night or Saturday night. Um, we pretty much have to adopt a budget tonight.
I just, to be clear, this is.
Yeah.
So any changes.
Yeah.
Need to be done tonight.
I just have enough. Not off the subject, but. Remind me, uh, where we sit for road maintenance? Did we increase that this year in the budget?
We, so we have our normal stuff. Remember we talked about, and I believe we've contacted J U B. To do some studies, right?
About like the utility fee or or the budget itself.
I'm more interested in what we've got in a budget for.
For this year.
This year so that we can keep our guys working, so to speak. As far as maintenance roads and.
I can't remember when I called that.
We had enough reserves.
Here's the public group.
So this is what we have. So we have 400,000. We've got some streetlight money. We've got, I can make that bigger. Um, right there. So we've got like 40,000 for streetlights. We've got some snow removal money. We got 75,000 for sidewalk maintenance and repair. Um, 25,000 for sidewalk expansion, road maintenance and repair, 60,000 additional streetlights. We've got 400,000 in class C, 570 of local option and 40 of local option trials money. These two are the same. We just kind of like separate the pocket.
It could be used for either. So.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That answers my question. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Did you want to talk about like tech net or any of that?
Um, no, I want to talk to you about that.
Yeah.
I've got some information. She's just copying it right now. They don't know that if that's more of just an internal thing that really doesn't affect these guys.
Doesn't affect the budget.
Right.
The only problem we have is impacts the judges wage. Because we have to do the average increase of all of them. So like after tonight, I don't know that we can really do anything until next year. Cause they're approving the pay scale. And everything we have in the resolutions is based upon what's already in place.
I don't think we need to do anything. I don't think it's an increase. I think it's just a matter of making sure that they're accounted for properly. So.
Okay.
I didn't see anything that said bachelor's degree or anything like that. So.
Okay.
I'm going to got four samples. I'm going to have you read through and see what your opinion is.
Okay.
But so what we've got on tech net, just so everybody knows what we're talking about in transparency. It it tells us a job and this is what everybody's doing. And here's the average median. Problem is we're such a small town that we have somebody doing this job and a little bit of this job and a little bit of this job. And so when they get their thing, it says they're 90% this, they're rated at 90% of this job. And they're thinking, where's my other 10% of value? And so we're trying to figure it out so that we can put it under a bucket where they can show 100%. So it's, it's not really going to need to change, uh, wages for budgets. It's just how we allocate that and how we show that. So it's the way I view it.
Yeah. And if it changes the wage, I would say that it's re, we really couldn't do anything after tonight.
But we, we could July 1st though.
No, cause it would impact the judge's salary and we have to give him the average increase. So we really can't, like, we really needed to have this discussion probably a couple of weeks ago.
Nate.
Unfortunately.
But I don't think we're looking at an increase on that. We just want to make sure that it's. Clarification. So. So we don't, it won't mess with the budget in my opinion. Do you agree?
Yeah, I agree. It should.
Okay, all right.
Thanks. So we just have to, so just to back up, so what tech net is, so we have a policy in our personnel policies. What technic is, is it's basically a database. And if you subscribe to that database and it's proprietary information, so we have to be really careful. We can't like have all of it up here on the screen and show you guys in a public meeting. Cause it is proprietary information and they're really stringent on that. They'll kick us out of it. But it's a database setup that local governments can report to, and it's all based upon the job description. And the reason that that's important is in one city, somebody might be called, I don't know, like a parks worker. And somewhere else they might be called.
Like here's an example, public works operations manager, uh, proper public works supervisor. Uh, you know, just those two terms change things and that's one.
That might be actually the same thing.
It is the same thing when you look at it, but it's the, but it's the terminology.
And if you read the, yeah, and like lots of people, like some people use the, the term like city administrator. Some people use the term city manager. So in tech net, they have all these job descriptions. So you really have to match the job description, not the title. So when you look at the job description, like some cities, like a city recorder is a great example. Cause in some cities, like the city recorder is almost like a city administrator. They do payroll, they like do what an AP clerk would do, like they pretty much run the city. But then in other cities, like in Ogden City, like all the city recorder does is go to meetings and record meetings. And so in those job descriptions for like a city recorder, there might be five or six different city recorder job descriptions. And then the other thing that comes into play is like education requirements or certifications and those things in the job description. It has what's required. So then when you match to that job description, then everybody who has that job description. Part of techno is not only can you get the information, you have to report. So then you report, this is what we're paying. So how we use it here is we can go there and we can get the information and then we can pull out. Um, that pay scale, cause in the past, how our pay scale was set up is is based on like keelfield and some of that. And for a little while, like how increases were done is it was just kind of done on like a random survey of entities around here. So we don't really do a cost of living adjustment because that's basically based into the scale. As other cities do increases and we survey, then the scale goes up. And so, and how it's set up, how we have proven in the policies is there's 18 steps. So each year, as long as an employee has a satisfactory employee evaluation, they get a stat. When they get to the top of the scale, they don't get increases unless the scale goes up, but they don't go down either. And so then once we have all those increases. We figure out like Andrea does all this, she figures out a percentage and then that's how we dictate the judges' salary. And then how you guys really come into play is you approve this pay scale each year. And then it really doesn't matter. Um, per se, where like if Nate was to leave, we have the pay scale approved. We may or may not have the budget there, but we have the pay scale. So we'd just hire a new person there. Or like when we are budgeting to hire a new, um, public works thing, that's where like we already have this pay scales for a public works. Crew leader. So I asked Nate, I'm like, what step do we need? And I can't remember what we did. We did like an eight or 10 or something. Or five, I don't even remember. But so then we have a pay scale associated with that position. So. So anyways, so that's kind of how it all fits together. Um.
So it is critical then, so to speak, that you're paying attention to the job description.
The job description is the biggest part. The title is kind of irrelevant when it comes to tech net. It's the job description. And so sometimes like there may not be another job description. So when we originally set this up, Boyd and I and worked on it a ton. Like part of the reason some of these were a percentage is because like maybe we didn't require. Something that somebody else did or whatever the case may be. And that's how a lot of entities are. Sometimes they adjust it like if maybe there's a bachelor's degree requirement. But they're like, you know, we're not getting any applicants with bachelor's degrees. So we're going to adjust the scale a little bit and then we're going to basically like pull that requirement. Um, so.
We are looking at cities, you know, high room and there's some of the neighboring's not neighboring, but close by cities that are. Using similar cities, similar size. So to me, this gives us a great advantage in in helping. That's why we went to tech net.
Yeah, I, I, I haven't talked to a mayor that doesn't use this. And, um, on Bonavista board, Bonavista uses that. I don't know if fire district does as well. So.
It's, it's becoming very, and when we did this, it wasn't as popular. But, uh, now it's becoming more and more popular and more and more used. And more and more people are putting information in there, which helps everybody.
Helps the data because, you know, some jobs have been, uh, you know, based on, you know, certain things within an area. Uh, you know, for instance, like Hill Air Force Base or Norfolk Grumman. Nothing of what they do has anything to do with what we're doing. There might be something, but not.
People. And the other nice thing is we don't do banding. If you've ever heard that term, that's what the federal government does a lot of. Like they combine jobs and say, hey, we're going to make one pay scale for all these jobs. We look at each job description separately. So like going back to Nate again, like if it's really hard to find like a building official. Then in theory, like that wage should go up to reflect that. So we should be able to recruit good people. Um, cause we're staying caught up with the pay and things like that. But that job description is critical because if we're matching to a job description, that's really more than what we're doing. Then we're really overpaying for, for that position. So we've really got to like, that's the meat and potatoes of this thing.
So that's the explanation, just so you know, sort of what kind of things we're doing with. Didn't mean to say that you guys don't need to know about it because you do, but it's not a decision that we have to make here. So.
Oh, but it's good to understand it. And I appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah. Where it impacts you guys is the scale. Because you guys are the ones that have to approve this because then that impacts the budget. So. But it's a really good system. The only thing it doesn't do is you really don't, if you have somebody who's like going gangbusters. You really don't reward the high performers. You really just do whatever the staff does. So. Any other questions?
You made it just to talk to Katie.
No, we gotta. Allow Katie to ask any questions she has.
I don't know if we're, if, if I wish, if I should ask this now, but about the. Or during the agenda, but it was some questions on the risk assessment. Should I ask that now or later?
Yeah.
We really don't have to go through it in detail like during the meeting. It's really just, excuse me, so that you guys can see it and like sign off on it.
Um. So the written policies, so the ones that have the dashes through them are ones that we didn't get the points for, right?
Correct.
So why don't we have written policies for. Pass proceeding and deposits and. Bro, reporting fraud and abuse and that would seem like pretty simple, like things we could.
Uh, what?
I think we do now.
I don't know if we have official policies and the state has examples of what they dictate to be a policy. So we might have like parts of it. We just need to have Liam look at it.
Like that's a good, something that's a pretty simple. Ac- action that would help. So you could get our points. And so that would be something I'd like to see us work.
Credit for what we are doing.
Well.
Or do what we need to to get credit for what we.
Well, and to minimize, minimize our risk, like.
Yes.
Right? And some of it comes back to what you guys want to spend, like is it worth spending, you know, like, I don't know what Liam would charge to put together. You know, likes, you know, I don't know, like some of these that like a form to you guys to sign like this one. Um, you know, like some, like an ethical behavior form, like if it costs 500 bucks, is it worth it? Like it's up to you guys.
I mean, I think if it costs 500 bucks and it's like a stitch in time saves nine. And it protects us against risk and fraud in the long run, it's probably worth the investment.
It's just like designing a form really. Make you more ethical. I don't know. But yeah, we can have Liam work on any of these or look at, I can get him. Um, like I said, the state auditor, they provide like a policy, like reporting fraud and abuse and what they're looking for in the policy. So he could look at what we have or don't have and. You start working on all these.
Have a policy handbook for the city.
Right.
That includes all of these elements. So as you go through there, what if there is fraud and abuse? Do we have a policy and procedure for reporting it and dealing with it? Why don't we have a written policy on how to handle and receive. Uh, funds in our front office or whatever we're, I mean, that's basic, uh, office management. You do this, you do this, you do this. Uh. Anybody that's handling money has some kind of a policy and writing about how that's to be done. To Katie's point, that one shouldn't be blank.
I thought we all had our training. Is there, do we not all have our training?
I don't know if we do this year.
I think we do.
I, and I think this is different than the open meeting training.
I realize that.
Yeah.
But.
And we, you might.
Easy, you know, 20 points.
Yeah. And, and like the fraud hotline, like that one's one that's kind of easy too. I mean, to really have a fraud hotline, if you look at what the state auditor's office wants. They want you to have like a dedicated line that somebody can call both like an employee or a citizen. Um. But we could just put the, the mayor's phone number on the webpage and say, if you know about fraud, like call this phone number.
Well, the, I was reading in the, in the appendices and about that fraud hotline. And they said it can be something as simple as like an email address.
Yeah.
That goes to, uh, yeah, go, um, sorry, stop, stop, stop.
Did I go past that?
Keep going, keep going, keep going. Um, okay, yeah. Um.
And some entities, the state has a fraud hotline. They didn't want you to do this, but I know some of the entities are just promoting the state's fraud hotline for their hotline.
But go, keep going down a little bit. It says can be as simple as providing an email address or phone number. Should be sent directly to a person who has the resources and objectivity to evaluate the concerns and investigative warranted. So that seems like we could put together a, an email, an email URL and have it forwarded to the attorney and. That would. Yeah. Good thinking. So that seems like another easy one that would be.
Yeah, there was a couple on there that we noted could be fairly easily done, like the ethics one and.
Ethical behavior. I just signed a form last week for.
You're welcome.
It was just signing a form.
Yep, yep. So like I said, it just comes back to what you guys want to do. And if you feel like it's worth it, I feel like, like all these things, even though I told you the score is arbitrary, like none of them are a bad idea. And some of them, like we might just need to sit down with like our, um, I can't think of his name right off the top of my head, our IT person. And Chris and have him, you know, like look at what the default IT and computer.
Sure, we've got a lot of those things in place, whether we have documents.
And that's it. I think we've got it. It's just, I don't know that we have like an official policy that says we do this, we use this. And so it would be real easy.
Can we take a quick straw poll just to see if everybody is in support of, you know, uh, writing these and adopting these policies? Um. And then if everybody seems to be in favor of it, then.
And we, we can actually kind of make it part of a motion when we adopt this.
Yeah, for sure.
That way that's more than a straw.
Took a breath down there. What were you thinking?
There's no reason why we as a municipality should not have a policy and procedure manual. Covering 90% of what we're talking about. And it's, it's just foolish for us not to.
There ought to be a handbook of operations for how we run our city.
And we did, but it's just that it's missing these kind of critical pieces.
It ought to be filled out.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we're missing them all.
Maybe what we need to go back and find out what we've got and give ourselves credit for it.
And I had talked to Ryan about that when this first was implemented. And I had talked to Ryan about that when this first was implemented and we just didn't quite get it done. I think I've talked to Liam about it a couple of times too. So we can get him done. Like, it's not a huge deal. And who knows, like, our current state auditor is leaving office. He's not running again. So there's always the chance too that they're gonna change this for next year.
Regardless of who's in the office, these are.
A lot of those policies are good to have, for sure.
On this broad assessment, we're we're looking at things and seeing, trying to see if we have actual policies for these. And so we'd probably like you to look at some of that and tell us what we have and what we need to do to have a.
Yeah, absolutely. I could look through it and see, this is the first I've actually seen of this report. So I could look through it though.
Could it possibly be that some of this stuff is in actual code or ordinance?
So when we originally did this, we had Ryan help me and then Andrea and Lindsay, we all went through the policies and checked them. So unless we've implemented something that I missed over the last few years, unless Liam's opinion's different than Ryan's, we probably don't.
And yeah, Liam, I think it would be nice if you could kind of take a look at this and make some recommendations of as to what we could do to come into compliance. Not, I mean, compliance is, not that it's not.
To get a better score.
What this really is, is uh, a checklist of reasonable, responsible behavior. Uh, and you ought to look at it and say, no, we're not doing that and we're not doing that. Well, we ought to be. What it is, is a reference point for how we're doing what we're doing.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I would say the score really is irrelevant. We really probably should just strive to have all of them done. It, and some of them, like the audit committee, like our whole city council is probably gonna be the audit committee. And so like, that one's really pretty.
Just basically declare that.
You just have to define what it is.
And then I think you have to formally meet as like an audit committee. So it's kind of like the RDA board meeting, right? It's just like checking the boxes.
Another, yeah, another committee, yeah. Let's have another committee.
I think you can do that on a quarterly basis, right?
Just annually.
Annual or annual?
Yeah.
So it's not like it's.
And then my last question was looking at the budget and the budget adjustment. Um, in the adjustment to the expenditures.
Uh huh.
We were thirty thousand dollars over our legal court services. That seems like a pretty significant.
So we weren't quite that, but I put extra in there. If you remember, we talked about this in May. A lot of that has to do from talking to Andrea and Lindsay about it is um, Judge Olditz is using the public defender a lot. And so we get charged like, I think it's a hundred and seventy-five bucks or two hundred dollars every time we use them. And so I had no idea how many more cases, you know, like would come in and when they'd invoice this last and stuff. So that's why that's there. And the offset is just for a bigger transfer in case we had a little more money left over.
Okay, um, yeah, I think that answers my questions.
Okay, we have everybody's questions answered for the work session. You can have it if you want. Yeah.
Well, I drink this.
So um, we have, we have now seven minutes left. Just, we can take a quick seven minute break, but we'll be back at six thirty to slam the gavel down and get on with life here.
Made it on time either. My son, I asked my kids to get the stuff out of the back of the my Jeep and I had a Pyrex back there and they were pulling a bag out and shattered a Pyrex all over my front driveway. And so I had to clean up glass before I could leave.
It's okay.
Stuff happens. The last work session, we had what I walls in here with fifteen minutes left.
I don't actually, I need to.
Sometimes you just be there when you get there.
How was tonight?
So Cody, as long as you're sitting there with a keyboard and a mouse, do you mind doing what you're doing right now with it for the public hearings and whatnot? And and maybe even show the agenda while we're doing previous things? We'll let you be the tech guy for but you're not getting a raise because of that.
Chief Kate. People are getting raises?
He is.
Only two, only two.
Okay, so we're on a break right now. We didn't propose it.
And that's what it said is is that we have to implement that if it's gonna happen.
Do you want to hear on the back of your neck or heart rate? I can give you the one.
Um, cardiovascular, stand, um, you want to be able to run further faster. Further, faster, higher, whatever the others.
So Bob, the thing I wanted to talk to you about. Yeah, so.
I don't know your calendar.
Don't worry about my calendar. One of the reasons.
Just like what they did for uh, for the internet part, privacy policy, right? Yeah, good. It's okay. Thank you.
Let's, let's avoid Thursday nights. Basically.
Okay. For that.
Oh, yeah, 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 over Mary Sliderville.
Yes. Can it be two different zones? Cause I was looking it up. I was bringing to the reason that.
It said June has just been horrific for me. It's just, it won't get better until June is over.
I need Monday, come back Friday again.
Well, I left, I left on the third and came back on the eleventh, brought my granddaughter back with me. She's been here a week. Her parents will show up here Saturday to stay with us for a week. They'll leave and my other son from Idaho will be here for a week. This passes through the system and I'm grateful for it, but it also requires me to be there. I'm gonna see grandpa. Oh, I'm not gonna be home. I'm not going anywhere anymore, except what I do with them.
Still have that instead of A1. Like, why not just make it all C2 and then have a.
Got obligations. Well, I'll still do what I need to do. Between now and then, we'll have one more city council. Fourth of July is on Thursday. So the next one after that won't be until nineteenth or something like that.
And I, I agree with that, because then on our master shows.
Down there always.
Cause it, just because of if anybody looks at our zoning map.
The eighteen, yeah, I just missed it by a day.
We'd say, hey, it's a development agreement. Here it is. But it just looks like anyhow, it's, if it's gonna be commercial.
Told the guys at the temple, I'm absolutely not available late on Thursdays. So they know that I won't get scheduled for anything late on the day down there. I might be there early in the morning. Like I was today at four fifteen. I could be there any day, any shift. Sometimes I'm there early in the morning. Sometimes I come in at ten thirty. Sometimes I come in at four thirty and half noon.
Yeah. I was there last year. Yeah, we need to do that.
Well, we actually have, we actually have a meeting on the fourth. It's called the Freedom Fest.
That's right. We can, we don't have to, okay, traditionally, we cancel meetings and meetings, but we don't have. And I remembered it too. And by then, we'd already adjusted this agenda several times. And it's like, okay, no more, one more. No more one more on this one. So we, we can, we can basically cancel it and I'll just say it in a minute. Because of that.
I assume he's looked at it.
We have a better meeting, we have a better meeting on the fourth that we've had for a long time. It's gonna be fireworks, food and music.
Yes.
Putting it together, I would guess.
I would guess, things like that.
I did ask them. I was like, is it Mary Slater thinks about marriage?
See, Andrea has been saying.
So, yeah, reach out to them. We'll see what they said tonight.
I'm just, this is second time I've looked. It's on the bills.
Mm hmm.
Second quarter. Where's their accountability to us for what we're getting, what we pay?
That's my question. Are you talking about recycling?
Definitely take that now.
What's that?
Animal services.
I'm talking about what goes out on the curb every week. We're paying half again as much for one tip on the recycle as we are for two tips on the garbage.
And we're short for now. Careful not now.
That's what they told us.
Who's taking?
No, well, they changed their name.
What?
I don't remember.
Doesn't matter. The point is, they're selling that. Well, they are.
Anyway.
They're not happy about it.
It's, it's okay. It's six thirty and like to call this meeting to order the June twentieth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting. We had a previous budget work session, so we got a lot of that stuff worked out. Uh, we're going to start off with uh, David J is gonna give us a prayer, pray for us. And Katie, would you mind leading us in the pledge? So we'll get started with that.
Our Father in Heaven, as we gather together here tonight in this city council meeting, we uh, ask thee to guide us in these affairs, to temper us in our judgments and decisions and to be able to work in harmony with these, with each other and the citizens of this city as we come together to move forward in the ways that are best. We ask thy blessing upon these proceedings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pete after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for wits of stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, David and Katie. Okay, next thing on the agenda is public comments. Is there anybody from the public who would like to come up and make a comment or to to the council? Anyone? Anyone? Moving on. So, report from planning commission. Madam Chair, please.
Okay, last week was really easy. Oh, thank you. Last week was really easy. We had no work session. Um, and then we held two public hearings, one for the new amended C2 ordinance and the other for the C3 amended ordinance. And then we approved, well, we moved on for recommendation to the city council for the updated signs to the Costa Vida at the previous Burger King on twenty seven hundred. And that was it. However, I have, I have something for you guys. Okay, so.
Giving us assignments?
Well, no, well, kinda, kinda. Okay, so we all are aware of the piece next to Heritage Ranch that Black Pine came in to do a joint agreement with Marriott Sliderville and Far West. We had meetings with them and the mayor, Boyd, Nate, Public Works. Um, and they have finally presented their development agreement. However, before I put it on an agenda for the planning commission, I feel like we need a refresh for everyone else. And I would request a joint work session relatively soon with the planning commission and the city council. So what I'm asking for you is to give me some dates. You guys are available that we can have. Liam is going to review it the first of next week.
Is the eighteenth before of our next meeting okay? July eighteenth?
Eighteenth, okay.
Well, the eighteenth is our meeting.
I know, I know what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, before. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm also wondering if this is uh, something that we want to bring in our new RDA consultant on.
I, I was, been talking to him about it.
Okay.
Okay, let's look at the calendar. So your next, well, yeah, because you guys are gonna cancel the fourth, I'm sure, right?
Yes.
Okay, so yes, your next meeting would be the eighteenth. I know that we don't have to, well, so they need to have two public hearings. They need to have a rezone public hearing and they need to have a development agreement public hearing. So depending on what my agenda is for this coming week for planning commission, I'm just gonna have those set on that. And then whenever between now and then, they won't be on our agenda until at least July eleventh. So something before July eleventh.
You want to do it that prior to your meeting on the eleventh?
Do you want to have a joint meeting that?
My only fear is, is that, I mean, I feel like you guys are gonna have comments, but I could be wrong. I just don't want to set it up to then be something on our agenda that we're like, hey, we don't need this. We're gonna pull it anyways.
Ready.
Yeah.
How far back do we need to go from the eleventh?
Can we try, well, I know we're falling into the fourth. Can we try next week or the beginning of like the first or second or the eighth or ninth?
I'm good for next week. I think we had a before your meeting next week.
A joint session on the twenty seventh?
That would be helpful. And there's a chance I might even cancel our meeting next week, because I don't really have have anything. And we can set a public hearing without a meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you. So if there isn't, so we may not, so we could even try Thursday if we wanted to do a meeting Thursday instead of our regular meeting, if I don't have anything on the agenda. I just might not have enough.
Leave it up to the council to kind of.
I'm okay with that, but I will not be in attendance.
When will you be?
Okay, well, and then, okay, I want you in attendance.
When will you be back?
I'm gone Monday through Friday next week.
So you'll be back by the first?
Yes.
Could we do the first?
The first works beautiful for me.
The first works great for me too.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
And then that's staying far away from the fourth and you want to try the first?
Yeah, what time?
You guys tell me, five thirty, six thirty, five, six? Six? Want to try six?
So earlier than later, because.
Five thirty?
Five thirty, okay. Okay, everyone good with that? Monday, July first, five thirty. I will send out an email for people that, well, for my commission, basically. And Liam, are you able to attend? Okay, well, and Nate, if you would could, if you could, yeah. Anything else? Okay.
This is just with us, no Black Pine.
Um, that is up to you. The only thing I would say is like having Liam here and Nate here, they can answer a lot of questions. We probably can't. We can.
This is about the development agreement, right? So if we had any specific questions for Black Pine.
We could call on them. I, I would encourage them to be here just because they're the ones that wrote it. But if Liam doesn't encourage them either to be here, then.
Why can't they hear what we're talking about?
I'm fine with that.
I don't think they can. I feel like last time, though, they kind of ran the conversation and I'd rather have us run, like, it be.
Invite them is to be here for questions and not.
Yeah, let's do that.
As presenters.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
And I think that's fair, because last time we really did invite them to present. We didn't, yeah.
So this is non-present.
Yeah, non-present, if there's questions. That would be my only concern, because I know there's gonna be questions and they can answer them a lot better than we can.
So there's another meeting.
Yep. So are we good with that then? Okay.
Don't go anywhere.
Okay.
So are you gonna contact Black Pine to have him at that meeting?
Yes, or Lindsay. I'll talk to Lindsay tomorrow because they have the application, all that kind of stuff. So she'll probably reach out to them.
Okay, so that was, are you finished with your report?
Yeah.
Okay, so our next thing is assignments and direction for the planning commission. And we have something.
Oh, good.
You already know this.
Okay.
Um, if it's all right with the the council, basically to review the accessory building measurements so that we can be consistent in how they're measured, uh, including, you know, wall heights, peak heights and all that other stuff to help everybody concerned uh, on what that could be. I think Lou helped bring that up. We went through the variance, nonvariance situation, but we can clear up a lot of things by just clarifying how things are done and what those measurements can be. For instance, a sixteen foot wall will accommodate a fourteen foot door. Could be just as simple as that, you know?
And I think whenever we plan that, that we would ask that Nate could be part of that conversation.
Yes, I think that would be, we would insist on that.
Agreed.
So.
Okay.
We take that as an assignment?
Yep.
Yeah. Anything else for these guys?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, next item of consent is uh, consider approval of minutes dated June sixth, twenty twenty four.
I move that we approve the minutes dated June sixth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Give me Katie a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consider approval of bills dated June nineteenth, twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second motion.
Katie, and was that Bob? Okay, Katie and Bob are motion second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, on to business items. Consider approval of a business license for Rusty Diamond LLC, Amber Owens. Amber Owen here. Okay, come on up and tell us what you're up to.
All right, so, um, I have a mobile salon. So I basically converted a trailer into a salon setup and do haircuts. So I wanted, my idea is, is to take it around to businesses with consent with the business, um, parties and like help offer services that are off of like business hours with salons and barber shops because there's not a lot of people that get time to go in every day to do it. So I want to do that and help also, you know, stay at home parents and with multiple kids. That's kind of my idea with it.
Interesting idea.
I'll have to add, I took my two boys yesterday to get their haircut. And one has blue hair now, which he really likes, and it's a really nice setup. It's.
It's clean. I bought a brand new trailer from, um, Blue Compass RV. And I actually took my trailer on Monday to them because I wanted to show them what I was doing because when we, when we bought the, um, trailer, we had told them our biz, my business plan. And they all wanted to see it and they actually came out and they were like, hey, we'll support this. And, um, if you want to bring it every couple of weeks, we'll tell people about you and offer these services. So it's just a very clean setup.
What do you use for hookups? How do you?
I have water from my house to hook up and then like I take it to like a maverick to dump it.
You have an internal generator that give you power?
I have power with a generator and everything. It's like a sleeping trailer, like if you go camping.
To a place, uh, is it with an appointment? Do people know you're coming to the make appointments?
I will have flyers to let people know where I'm at. And like, it's kind of like where the food trucks go and stuff kind of thing, like, so I'll let people know.
Walk in and if you've got a minute, I get my haircut. If you don't, I don't.
Yeah, like it's basically like I'll just do the haircuts. If there's any kind of like chemical service, I need to be hooked up to water. So I'll be taking those on appointments only.
Tell me where this will be parked when you're not doing business.
What?
Where will this be parked?
It's parked at my house.
Okay. Um, one of the things that that my soapbox for years is, um, that we don't change the look of our neighborhood.
Right.
So signage, anything like that, is it, is it possible to be behind fence or on an RV pad or?
We're, yeah, we're gonna put it behind a fence. Um, we're working on that currently. Right now it's just sitting in the driveway, like where everybody else's campers sit. Like it looks like a camping trailer.
Okay, and and that's fine. I just want to make sure it doesn't change the look.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, yep.
And you're not planning to do anything there? This will all be offsite?
This will be at my house in the, because I have to be hooked up to water when I do the chemical services. So I can do it at my house.
You'll still use it at your home like you would a normal salon?
Yes, correct.
And you understand that you can't put signage out?
Yes, correct. Yep.
Hey, any more questions for the applicant?
Just out of curiosity, dry waste, the hair clippings. I know that they're just, but where are you going to increase your volume, not at your, at your house? Or?
Just be like a home salon. To me, it's gonna be.
Like, so basically I have like a little like central vacuum that I just like sweep them into and then I dump them into a garbage can like normal.
So at your home, when you're running this, um, again, that's by appointment, obviously. Uh, one client at a time, one car at a time shows up?
Yeah, no, I only, I'll finish each appointment. I won't take on multiple clients unless they, um, I have enough time. So I'm not doing it.
Need a parking lot or a bunch of cars in front of your house?
No, no, I won't have a parking lot and stuff in front of my house. No, it's just one at a time.
How long's the trailer?
Uh, twenty feet.
Yeah, so it's not a very big trailer.
Pretty good size, twenty foot.
It it's pretty good size, but it's not, not huge.
Okay, any more questions? Any motions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the business license for Rusty Diamond LLC.
I'll second that.
Hey, Cody and, or Katie and what Cody, Cody, Katie and Boyd. Boy, Boydie. Or the motion in second, uh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Sounds pretty cool, by the way, so.
Okay, next on the agenda, consider approval of ordinance number twenty twenty four dash twelve, approval of amendments to the C two commercial zone ordinance. And if you have any questions, I'm sure Madam Chair will help us out.
I think these are all the ones that were discussed, right?
We well planned this out, haven't we?
Okay, so.
I did have, sorry, one question. I gotta find it now. Um, there. I really liked the, um, changes to the setbacks, too. I thought that was like a really nice addition and then the language that spoke to like the lighting. I I think that was really thoughtful. Um.
Just to be consistent across the boards.
The one thing I noticed was like on the old one, we had on the restaurant, we had fast food, but then we dropped it from this iteration. Was there? It covered it? Okay.
Just redundant?
I think that answers my questions.
I move that we approve the ordinance twenty twenty four dash twelve for the amendments to the C two commercial zone.
I'll second.
Hey, Tim and Katie are motion second. This will be roll call because it's ordinance. Bob?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Next one, consider approval of ordinance number twenty twenty four dash thirteen, approval of amendments to the C three twenty seven hundred North Regional Commercial Zone Ordinance. We need a longer name for that. Any questions, comments, or motions?
We'll segment about this. We kind of hashed those things out. So I will make a motion if nobody has any questions or comments to approve ordinance number twenty twenty four dash one three, approval of amendments to the C three twenty seven hundred North Regional Commercial Zone Ordinance.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have Boyd and David as motion in second. Let's roll call this. Let's start the other end. Tim?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Okay, now they're unanimous. That has been updated. Okay, now for the fun one, consider approval of a sign for Costa Vida located at sixteen fifty five West twenty seven hundred North. Do we have anyone here representing Costa Vida sign people? Okay, just be. So come on up and just be prepared to answer any questions, any one of you. Whoever drew the short straw.
I guess that's me.
Tell us your name.
Um, I'm Chad Fowers.
Okay, do we have any questions about this signage?
Um, so you're utilizing mainly the existing signs that are there, right?
Um, as far as the pylon sign, yes, and, uh, the directionals that are already there.
The big forty foot high Burger King sign is now gonna become a Costa Vida sign?
It will remain the structure, but we'll have a different face.
I hope so, not Burger Vida.
Yeah, obviously. That's why they picked the location. It was already round.
Yeah, it's got a big deal up there.
And I just want to say, if anybody ever needs an example of what to submit with their sign application, this is a very good one.
Thank you. Hey, no further questions? Then.
Motion that we approve the sign for Costa Vida located at sixteen fifty five West twenty seven hundred North.
I'll second.
I think I heard Tim next. So Bob and Tim were motion in second. And this is, I think we'll just do this in a overall, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
I'll bench the open sign.
The open sign?
These stuff come back for a.
No, that's the open sign.
Yeah, yeah, they'll, uh, work on that. We're just the sign, so.
Sure, take care of that. Yeah, get, get, get the right people in. Okay, so this next little, so we took care of all of those business items. We're now gonna get into the fun of the budget stuff. We have four public hearings that we need to to go through. The way that I'd like to do this is for each of these items, Cody's gonna, uh, present it. So I'll, I'll read what it is and then then we'll consider opening in the public hearing. We'll get feedback and then close. And we'll go in and out of each of those. So that's all right with everybody. We'll get started. So the first one is adjustments to the twenty three, twenty four budget. Take it away, Cody.
Thank you, Mayor. So these are the changes that I'm proposing for budget amendments to the current year budget. So you can see we're increasing our sales tax budget by thirty thousand, our unappropriated fund balance by eight hundred thousand. Where that money's going is we're increasing the legal court services expenditure budget by thirty thousand and then our contributions to the capital projects fund by eight hundred thousand. So we're basically just increasing our transfer of the capital projects fund and then increasing that one line. I can answer.
Just so we're, we're doing presentation then public hearing.
I I get that. So I thought yours was the presentation, so.
This is presentation. Now we can consider.
Motion to go into a public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, we have Boyd and Katie as motion second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are now in a public hearing to consider those adjustments. Is there anyone from the public who would like to say something about this? Any feedback at all on this? Anyone? Anyone?
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Hey, Katie and Boyd, our motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're out. Now, presentation for approval of final budget twenty four, twenty five. Take it away, Cody.
Thank you, Mayor. So as we talked in the work session, this is the changes we made. Basically, to summarize what those changes are, we adjusted it for the property tax rate as it came from the county. Um, we added some legal services and professional services in our CBA fund. We moved the new employee from the sewer fund to the sanitation fund. We budgeted for a vehicle for that new employee. And then, um, we created a donations account for outside entities that with a five thousand dollar budget, and then we added some appropriations for economic development in the CBA. Everything else has stayed unchanged from our budget, uh, hearing or our budget works session for the tentative budget on May second.
Okay.
Make a motion to go into a public hearing.
Hey, Boyd and?
I'll second the motion to go into public hearing.
Boyd and Bob are motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are in the public hearing to consider the approval of final budget for twenty four, twenty five. Anyone from the public like to comment on this?
Take a motion to go out of the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, Boyd and Katie are motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're out. Public hearing to consider, oh, well, okay, approval of the enacting the compensation increases. Present, Cody.
Hold on, sorry, I went to the wrong place.
Actually, this is an ordinance.
Are we doing the consolidated fee schedule one?
Oh, yeah, we skipped over.
Well, we're doing the public hearings, the public hearing.
Oh, I'm in the wrong spot. Yep, I'm.
Those two could be combined?
This one we have to do by itself. That one that says specifically in state law. So this is Senate Bill ninety one. Um, as we talked in the work session, this is the Senate bill. They just find some new executive municipal officers. So it's basically our department heads and any like assistant or deputy department heads. We have to disclose their compensation, um, increases. And so, um, in the packet, we have the, the, um, proposed job description or the wages, sorry, like the wage scale so that we can show what the increases will be. Um, I also put together like a little form, I don't know how to open, that shows that increase as well for our departments. But that's what Senate Bill ninety one is, is just giving it that compensation increase. It really ties back to that, the wage schedule.
Okay, thank you, Cody. We can consider going into the public hearing now for this.
I'll make a motion that we enter a public hearing to discuss, um, SB ninety one, executive officer compensation increases.
Okay, Katie and?
I'll second.
Tim, our motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, sounds unanimous. We are now in the public hearing to consider ordinance enacting the compensation increases. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this? We're doing this all right, correct, Liam?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We have a lot of public hearings, but we have to have.
I I understand. So we're doing it correctly. I just wanted to make sure. So, um, anyone from the public?
I make a motion that we, uh, we leave the public hearing.
Amy Boyd, her motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, the next thing has to do with the consolidated fee schedule. So please presenter.
So our consolidated fee schedule, I believe our only changes here in the ordinance that Liam has, yep, is if you remember Econo Waste is proposing a five percent increase. I believe they can do that per their contract now. And so the cost of the first can or the cost of all of the garbage cans would go from eleven dollars to eleven fifty five per month. And the recycling cans would go from seven dollars to seven thirty five per month to reflect that five percent increase.
Okay, thank you. So, um, public hearing, motions.
I'll make a motion, we enter a public hearing to consider, um, the adjustments to the fee schedule.
Second.
Katie and Boyd are motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now in a public hearing to consider the amendments to the consolidated fee schedule. Anyone from the public like to comment?
As a member of the public, I do have a question. The, um, recyclable container fee is less than the trash fee.
Yes.
How long will Econo Waste allow us to continue? Because I thought we were gonna bring that price back up since it's they're collecting garbage or trash refuse today.
We are recycling and this is our prices that.
Okay.
We've agreed with them in our contracts.
Wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Is that contract negotiable at some future point?
It's always negotiable.
Well.
We negotiated it about.
Last year.
Last year. So that wasn't here. We do it often.
So also as a member of the public, my concern with the recycle side of this is, uh, they're half again as much for one tip as we are for one tip with the Econo Waste. In other words, Econo Waste getting eleven fifty five a month.
No.
Each time.
This is what we're charging.
This.
And it's all Econo Waste.
Right, okay, but the point is that eleven fifty five counts for two trash pickups a month. Or the recycle only accounts for one. The recycle's a lot more expensive. That's why I'm asking at some point, do we have the opportunity to decide again whether or not we even want to do this?
Yes.
Not right now, but I want to know down the road what our options are.
If you'd like to put it on an agenda for us to reconsider all of this, we absolutely can.
I'm not worried about the fee schedule right now. I'm talking, I'm talking about long term contract. When we entered into this, it was with the agreement that if you opted in, you could never get out. That's a lousy arrangement.
We can get out.
Yeah, we can put this on an agenda.
Individual cannot opt out. I can't say I don't want it anymore.
Right.
It's attached.
That's what we decided many, many years ago.
Yes, it is. And I've.
And we as a body can make other decisions, but we can do it on an agenda item in another meeting.
Thank you.
Absolutely, we can. So that was the public hearing.
The motion to move out of a public hearing.
Okay. Boyd and Katie, your motion second to leave. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are done with public hearings on this officially. Now we can actually vote on things. So the next one is consider approval of the adjustments to the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget.
I'll make a motion that we approve the adjustments as presented to the twenty twenty three, twenty four budget.
I'll second.
Dave and Katie are motion second. Because this is money, I like to do roll call, so I'm gonna start with Tim.
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Next item, consider approval of the certified tax rate for the twenty twenty four tax year.
I'll make a motion, we approve the certified tax rate for the twenty twenty four tax year.
Okay, Katie and Boyd are motion in second. Also roll call. Let's start with Katie.
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Okay, sounds unanimous. Moving on, consider approval of the final twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget.
I move that we approve the final twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget.
I'll second.
Okay, Tim and Boyd are motion in second. Uh, let's see, let's start with Boyd.
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Okay, another unanimous. Next item, consider approval of resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero four, amendments to the consolidated fee schedule.
I'll second, but can I ask a question? What's the difference between a resolution and an ordinance?
Um, an ordinance, so in statute, a resolution is kind of administrative in nature. When you guys change the personnel policy, for example, that would be done by resolution. Ordinances are always used to change, um, code. So city code is always done by an ordinance and other legislative. So city code is always done by an ordinance and other legislative items are generally done.
Should this be an ordinance, not a resolution?
No, this one's fine.
Okay.
Schedule isn't in this sense because we're.
We like it that way because it's changeable on the fee schedule.
We're purchasing a service.
Thank you.
Okay, I remember having Boyd as the motion. Did I give a second? Okay, couldn't remember whether you gave a second and then asked a question or vice versa. Okay, so let's, Tim.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Boyd.
Aye.
David.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Okay, that one passes unanimously. The next one, consider approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash one five, enacting compensation increases for specific city officers.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, enacting compensation increases for city officers.
I'll second the motion.
Katie and Bob are motion second. Bob.
Aye.
David.
Aye.
Boyd.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Okay. Oh, we have this one more that's in red. Consider approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash one six, amending the treasurer and justice court pay.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, amending the treasurer and justice court judge pay.
I'll second.
Katie and Tim are motion second. David.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Boyd.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous. I even tried to fool you and you didn't fall for it. So that's all unanimous. Oh, and then we have one more, consider fraud, consider approval of the fraud risk assessment from the Office of the State Auditor.
I will make that motion with the agreement that we work on it for next year.
I'll second.
Okay, Boyd and Katie are motion in second. On this one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Whew.
We did it.
We did that. That was a lot of stuff. Thank you, Cody, for all your hard work. Thank you, public, for all of your comments. And Mayor Council follow-up report on assignments. I'm going to start with Tim.
Okay, I only have one item, and that's as part of the legislative committee. I am reviewing all of the ordinance or the state codes, the bills, House bills and Senate bills that have been passed. I'm currently most of the way through House Bill four seventy-six. I don't really want to comment too much on that right now because when I'm done, I'm going to give everybody a report on what issues I think that we need to be aware of going down the road. And it's, it refers to municipal land use regulations. So it's one that I picked first to go over, but I will be reporting on that each week, each meeting from here on out.
That'd be awesome.
And that's all I have for.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Katie.
Okey-dokey. Couple of things. Playground for Mountain View, we are working on some paperwork with the national parks to get the environmental clearance for that site. But I did receive word that we, some of our elements are in transit. So I coordinated with Nate to have a place for those to live until we get our clearance, the clearance done for that site. And.
Is that just a technicality or is there a problem?
It's the federal government wanting to justify their.
Existence.
Just, yeah, that's all I'll say.
You're wondering if it's going to hold us up or it's going to.
It will because we have to jump through some just documentation hoops to prove, you know, to just make sure that it's not a wetland. It's not a historical or cultural site. And the Department of, the Outdoor Recreation Department has been very helpful in kind of helping us provide that information. And so it's just, you know, checking the boxes and providing them the information they need. But he hopes to have that all wrapped up by September. So, but the wheels of the government turn slow. And so there is no guarantee of that. Um, so that is our next, I had to move our park meeting this week because of the holiday. And so we, that's been rescheduled to the twenty-fourth this Monday. And we will, as a Parks Committee, be discussing, we've received kind of a draft land lease agreement for the Meadows property with the soccer association. So we'll be reviewing that proposed agreement and coming up with some, you know, counters or, you know, whatever we would like to see changed in that. And Liam, you'll be there, right?
Yeah.
Awesome. Um. And so if, and if any of you, if you're interested in attending or want to. Oh, just kidding. If only one more of you are interested. No, not even one. Nope, sorry. I'll report back.
We already have two.
Um, I attended a board meeting for the mosquito abatement district. And they have been out and they've been spraying. And they have seen less because of the colder temperatures this spring. Their numbers have been lower of mosquitoes this year. But they said that when the temperatures increase, so do mosquitoes. So they anticipate with these warmer temperatures now they'll be out and more active. I learned a couple of things that, and I knew this one, that if you're having a party or if you have some, if you're having a particular issue with mosquitoes at your home, you can call the abatement district and they will come out and spray for you. But it's good to know that they're mosquitoes and not necessarily midges or some other bug because they don't treat for those. And sometimes people get confused between the two. So, but if you would like, or if you're having an event or a party and you want them to come spray before, it's best to give them a couple of days warning and they'll come out before your event and spray for you. Also, if you have a, if you're beekeeper and you have a bee habitat at your house, they would, they appreciate it if you call and report it to them. And then that way they won't spray near your home and kill your hive. And so they keep a database of those people that have reported their hives. And they do, they take very good care to not spray in those areas. And so, yeah, that was, and then they did their audit and they had a really glowing audit from the same people that do ours. And then Freedom Festival, we met today to kind of go over last minute details. And we have events coming up on the twenty-eighth, which is the golf tournament, golf show, golf show, golf tournament, car show at Smith Family Park and a pickleball tournament. And then June twenty-ninth is the, another pickleball tournament and a park to park ride. We will be starting that at nine AM and going from Mountain View Park to Smith Family Park and invite all of you to join us. Bring a bike. And then on July third is our softball tournament at eight-thirty at the City Center Park on two thousand. And then July fourth is the day with all of the fun. We have the five K run walk in the morning, a breakfast, flag ceremony and grand marshal celebration, the parade. And then following that is all of our fun in the park at seven. So Boyd and I'll let Boyd share about the parade.
Okay.
That's me.
Okay, Boyd.
Okay, on that note, this year we're going to ride on a fire truck. So City Council will be on the fire truck. Limited room, so.
Okay, just tell me where you need me.
Okay, so we might have to have, we might have, we might have to have something else for the planning commission. Depends on how many you're going to have. So would you get that number?
We don't have a voting turnout.
All right, so.
In the open?
In the open?
I just want to know if pumpers going to be active, so if anybody saw water balloons, fire back.
I've already threatened Robbie today with that. So we'll see what happens. So anyway, that's, that, we just thought we'd change it up a little bit.
When you say limited room, how many people do you want on the fire truck?
Right now, it looks like we'll be able to have the six of us right now. And we'll see what happens.
Oh, you're fine.
Okay. But. We won't have to, we won't have to decorate anything. And so it's, it'll be fun. And I think it's.
We just meet here?
Yeah, we'll just meet here. So we'll let you know, I'm trying to get all those little details arranged, but I haven't been able to meet face to face with Deputy Chief Clark yet. So, anyway.
Is that all you have?
No, that's not all I have. So I just lost all my. Yeah.
Your fire truck and fuck.
We've been working on a few personnel committee issues. And so we explained some of that after the budget meetings, some of those issues that are going on. There's another, we are going to put out a posting for two new employees. It's probably okay to say we received a resignation letter from one. And so we'll, we'll do that. But we also have a lead person that we're putting out as well. So I think you know that, Cody, part of the budget. So, right?
Yeah, we have them here.
Okay. And so those two things are going on. So if we need, know some good people that need a good job, that could be long-term, we want somebody that comes in here and can get certifications. And we'll do, the city's really good to their employees and they last a long time. This doesn't happen very often. So it's a good place to work.
What are the positions or position?
Public works.
Lead, what do we call it? Lead?
Crew leader.
Crew leader.
There's possibly it will be concrete asphalt, strapping, then labor, ranging between grades one and three, whatever we need.
That would be part of, you know, snowplow driving, those kind of things. So.
On mowing.
On mowing, whatever, general city maintenance.
In both full-time?
Yes, with benefits.
We, we had a good meeting. I was actually in Tampa, but I joined via a Teams meeting, which I'm grateful for. But we, Chief Sullivan resigned.
Retired.
Excuse me, retired.
I was like, excuse me.
He retired and he's, he's done an amazing job. And we, as a board, looked at that and we decided we love the direction that that's going. And we didn't want to take it out anywhere else. And so we appointed Chief Rick Clark, Deputy Chief Rick Clark, to be the new chief. And he, he has done amazing things for the, for the district. He's saving just a lot of money. So we're really excited about him and his potential. That was a unanimous vote. Not a lot of discussion because he has proven himself. And Chief Sullivan has mentored him very well. So we're still in great hands. And I think Chief Clark will take it to the next level, just like Chief Sullivan did. So.
But do they have softball players?
I don't, we don't know. We'll find that out.
How many years does, has Chief Sullivan served?
Fifteen here, but I think forty-one total.
I was going to say, he's probably, yeah, okay.
He was in Chandler, Arizona for a long time.
Right.
And he's been here fifteen years.
Okay.
He's done, done great things. So I say this every time, but the.
The whole crew is good there.
Whole crew is good there. We're getting more applicants because good things are going on. We've, this, this whole division, this whole district has changed. We have a great reputation. So people want to come to work here because of the work environment. We're not always the highest paid, but we're not the lowest either. So, okay, I think, other than that, the mayor and I have had a few meetings with some contractors on some projects. I don't know if you want me to expand on that.
I'll, I'll hit on those if you don't mind.
That's all. Thank you.
That's cool. Thank you, Boyd. David.
I've been gone a lot. And so not, I've missed a couple of these conferences that we've had with some of our developers. We did have a little meeting this week with Mick and Roberta. Considering Weaver Human Services, they are discontinuing the Meals on Wheels that they were bringing out here on Mondays. As of, next Monday will be the last one. So first of July, nothing from WHS is coming this way toward us. In our discussion with Mick and Roberta, they're going to kind of correlate with each other a little bit. And we're going to try to provide some alternative snacks, resources, different kinds of things for people to come into the senior center. We talked about maybe even once a month, we have a nice lunch. And we can advertise what it's going to be. It would maybe be catered by somebody like Chick-fil-A or Arby's or whatever we can do. And it wouldn't be every Monday, but once a month, there would be a day when maybe more people would come to just enjoy a little midday meal with each other. That's still in a discussion phase. We haven't reached any conclusions. That would obviously come here. There is a budget to run the senior center. This isn't going to stretch us beyond our capacity to, to maybe make that just a little more enjoyable environment besides dum-dums and Halloween candy for snacks on the tables. Maybe we can bring it up a notch and make it a little, a little homier place for people just to come and be. That was the gist of that conversation. We're going to get back with them and see what they want to do. But right now, it's, it's kind of in their hands to see how we want to move forward. The WHS loss is not a significant loss. Meals on Wheels ain't that great. And we were only getting four or five people every Monday that were even here to eat it. That was minimal. And the deal was we could continue to access that service, but we would have to go pick it up, bring it here and return anything that didn't get used.
Oh, my goodness.
So we're going all the way up to Pennsylvania Avenue to the airport to pick up eight or ten meals, bring them down here, see if anybody even wants to eat them. And if they don't, we got to take them back. We figured it was not worth the time, the effort, anything. We just let them go. So that's kind of where we are with that whole thing.
Okay, that it, Dave?
That's it for now.
Thank you.
I don't know where I'm going to eat, but I'll be all right.
Before I get started with mine.
Okay, Bob.
I had a happenstance opportunity to meet with Chief Arbonne two days ago. I'm under good authority that the police car, the Mustang is being repainted. You might be one of the first people riding on the fourth if you talk to the lieutenant.
That's hot.
Yeah.
Even better.
It always, it always overheats.
Yes.
They've been doing a lot of work on it, so we'll see.
Usually overheats about dabs.
About dabs.
Now I'm, now I'm the real.
Continue, Bob.
Weber Sewer District, the Board of Trustees met last week and there was a proposal and a ratification that there will be a tax increase for Weber County residents. It will be approximately seven dollars per year. And part of that is going to cover the expansion and the changeover to the new processing system, getting rid of chlorine and using ultraviolet. There will be a period of time where both systems have to operate towards the end of the year. So there, that's part of the increase. And then the rest of it is just because of growth and economy. So anticipate there's going to be a tax increase that you're going to see next year. Emergency management, I attended a meeting earlier this week. We have a plan that needs to be submitted. I held it until tonight just to make sure there weren't any additional comments. I'm sending it in as an incomplete product, but all the blocks are filled. So we'll get credit for submission. I have to help get us going and make this plan. When I went to the meeting, I asked for a copy of our previous plan so I can plagiarize from ourselves. And they said there has not been an emergency management plan.
I don't think we, I don't remember ever being asked for one. I thought there was flood mitigation.
Right. The Ops, emergency Ops Plan, I received that. There's flood mitigation. Those are contributing documents that I'll attach and submit it. But we have some work to do. In my process of learning and going through this meeting, I learned that FEMA is the driver all the way down through the state into the county. And we are feeding into the county with our plan to fulfill the state requirements. If we desire any FEMA grant money, which is available for just a what-if or to prepare for a what-if occasion, we as city workers have some training. It's a short course on how to. It's a short course on how to emergency manage, if you, if you will. Um, we won't qualify for the FEMA dollars unless we can show each person that will have an operation or hands-on in an emergency have been trained. So I need to find out who, everybody within our organization, the city council, the city operations, um, maintenance, anybody that's gonna touch an emergency, needs to have the training so I can go after some dollars.
And I'm happy to help with that if you need a body or someone.
I will. So I've done grants for other things in another life, but I haven't done them for a city yet, so.
Well, and even like if you need someone to take the training to fill a role.
I figure that all of us are going to have to take it.
Get the training.
Yeah. If nothing else, it's more knowledge in your, in your brain. Um, so the plan will be submitted tonight. Um, told you about the grant money. There was a CERT, uh, community outreach meeting last night. It was done in-person or Zoom, and the majority of people did it via Zoom. Um, coming out of that meeting, um, or through the meeting, it was targeting city organizations, churches, synagogues, religious organizations that can help put in an emergency or CERT, um, bodies, if you will. They focused heavily on Saratoga Springs, their plan for CERT because it's documented and it's, um, a stake. It's a LDS church organization that they were focusing on as a guide. Um, they're talking about bringing back or revitalizing block captain programs and who is going to manage those people, and should the churches or the organizations, uh, move away from F R S radios and go to, uh, the newer standard, the G M R S radios, and how that processes should work or could work to, to mitigate emergency situations that CERT would respond to. So I will capture the rest of that information, but this one, basically, we need to take it back to our organizations that have been identified as potential CERT, um, responders.
We've got some people here that are heavily invested in that, Ray Parr in particular, who could be a great resource to you, uh.
And our CERT committee is meeting as we're talking at the old city hall building as they're going to try and revitalize that as their new place of business so they don't take up space and time here. And because we're going to try and move some of the equipment out of Westwood Village to a safer location, I've entered, I've looked at it, and it needs a better home. That's what they're going to try and accommodate for us.
Find, find a good use for that building.
Yeah. They don't know about this meeting or no, none of them, none of the, our city CERT, uh, group, uh, dialed into it. So I will backfill them and give them some, some information. Um, there was one question that came up in, let me back, digress back to the emergency management. Coming down from FEMA through the state, uh, one of the things that they wanna protect in an emergency is our cultural fabric. And they said we have to protect it. And I asked, because I didn't know, what is cultural fabric? Is it farmland or is it now homes and apartments because the farmland is going away? Is it an industrial base? What is our new cultural fabric? And after dialogue with many people, uh, the county decided to strike that requirement from our emergency management plan because nobody can answer it. And I'm, I don't wanna squelch anything. I don't wanna stop anything. If anybody can help us identify what cultural fabric means today to our city and to our county, I will go back and re-dialogue.
It means different things to different people. What I think for us, it's kind of a patchwork quilt.
I agree.
It means different things to different people.
It does, but they wanted it in our plan, and I could not answer it, so they're striking it from being in the plan. That is all I have for this period.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, um, I've got a few things. Um, so I met with Doug Larson, our CRA advisor, and with the developers on our CRA project area. Been having lots of different meetings and discussions there, trying to get all the balls rolling and getting all the ducks in order, in order to, uh, figure out how to, um, basically get stuff moving forward. Things are, uh, moving forward. Um, I also met with Logan Mayor and their economic director, um, because I wanted to find out about their experience with this developer because they are, uh, in the midst of doing things right now up in Logan, but basically the same types of things. Um, they had nothing but very positive things to say about them, so that made me feel better that, you know, you know, we're not going in, into the woods with folks that aren't, you know, straight up and up. I've always felt that they were, but, you know, never hurts to verify. Uh, Logan is, you know, they're very pleased with, uh, where they're going, so the, uh, Logan Cash, the Cash Valley Mall, I don't know who all remembers it, it's now a pile of rubble, and it's going to turn into something pretty good for the city of Logan. And perhaps something like that may rear its head into our lovely little community because we're in a good location. So that's where all of that stuff is going with that. Um, I did attend the senior dinner last week. It was very hot, uh, with good food, good people, and all the leftovers went to the fire department. They were very pleased, and they were really happy that there was cookies involved, so, you know. Got to take care of our first responders. They're very, yeah. Also went to a quarterly, Region One UDOT meeting. It was mostly about Highway eighty-nine. Um, but I, I was invited by, uh, Amy Mayby of Pleasant View, and most of it had to do with, uh, because it was about eighty-nine, it was mostly Harrisville and Pleasant View that were, uh, had concerns or questions on what was going on there. But we did squeak out some questions about twenty-seven hundred north because, you know, if we're gonna be increasing traffic or feeding into any of the traffic on that and how that's gonna impact any of our projects, uh, they basically told us, you know, how there's, uh, they've been planning a median on twenty-seven hundred north. It is now planned for twenty-twenty-five and funded, so. That's gonna matter for the things that we're doing along twenty-seven hundred north because it's a median down the middle makes it interesting to, uh, that makes a lot of ride-in, ride-outs, a lot of left-hand turns. And that's all I have as far as assignments, so.
Quick question with regards to UDOT. Do, uh, do they give updates on major corridors that they're working on or that they have in future, like next year, your five-year plan or whatever?
Um, this quarterly Region One thing was kind of about that, and this was mostly about eighty-nine. So, yeah, they were giving updates on that, but, uh, beyond that, um, we can have a meeting with them. We, we've actually got some of the arrange with them because we wanna do some planning and stuff and know what's going on with two thousand, for instance.
That's exactly my question.
Okay, yes, we, we're actually going to get on their schedule and have these meetings periodically with them about twenty, or two thousand west specifically, or SR one twenty-six as they like to refer to it because, well, it's, SR one twenty-six from Willard to Leighton, and it's not all the same name other than that. So, yes, we're, we're planning on, on doing that because they do have some plans for, for instance, um, a light is probably gonna be coming in, uh, hopefully fairly soon, right there at the fire station. That will feed into that development, you know, because we're gonna need lights somewhere and that kind of stuff, so. That's it. Okay, we have one last.
I moved it. We adjourned.
Okay.
Second.
Third.
Can we just do it by acclamation? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Good meeting.
I was gonna ask you too. Can we send like a return card or gift to Captain Sullivan?
Absolutely. I've got a little something for him.
Okay, that would, I think that'd be nice.
But we can do, I, I think we're planning on doing it. Do you wanna add? You know, I.
So what I'm. Lindsay has the one that's been signed and approved by the guys. I don't have one with signatures on it. I just wonder. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Do you know who has the trophy? It's in the fire department. Okay, listen to them. This is. You wanna bring it back on? Okay, it's what. That's what I heard, the, the fire department, so. Maybe you can help us get it back.